I'd like to call to order the City of Sagittuck City Council meeting for Monday, September 23rd. If you could please join me for the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If the clerk could call the roll.
Anderson, here.
Here.
Dean.
Here.
Gardner.
Here.
Muncie.
Here.
Stanton.
Here.
White.
Here.
All right, Mayor's comments tonight. I just want to thank the Parks and Public Works Committee member Kelly Roach and Mayor Pro Tem Baldwin for organizing the eighth grade service project last week for the Sagittuck students at the old airport property. They helped remove a lot of the invasive species and helped clear the trails out there. And the Outdoor Discovery Center gave students a lesson on biodiversity, habitat management, and watershed protections. And I love that the school kids got involved with this project, and we just want to thank everybody who was involved with that. Speaking of the school, last Friday, they held a community night before the football game. And not only was it really fun for everybody who was involved, but people were able to tour some of the new improvements at the school, which was really great. Great night, thanks to Liz Wilson, Christian Lefley, Kim Sharda, and all of the volunteers, as well as the local businesses that donated a lot to that community night. So, big event, lots of fun. And the school is also having our homecoming parade this Friday at four o'clock. The game starts at seven o'clock, and then they have the homecoming dance on Saturday. So, lots of fun stuff going on with the school. Also, thanks to everyone who attended the open house for the Maple Street project. We had a really nice couple of open houses where people could come in and give their opinion on things. And I got a lot of really great feedback from residents about having that open house and being able to share their opinions about it. And also, thanks to the League of Women Voters for holding the candidate forum. Again, that was really well attended, so it was nice to see everybody there for that. And then finally, Captain Brett Ennsfield is retiring from the Elegant County Sheriff's Department. And we just can't thank Captain Ennsfield enough for his service to our community. He has been great to work with. And I just want to read a letter that he wrote to all of us, and it was just really nice, and I just wanted to share it with everybody in the room and anyone who's online. Captain Ennsfield had said, "I'm retiring tomorrow, and I just wanted to reach out to the city's staff, leaders, and citizens to say thanks. I want to express my gratitude for working with everyone over the years on many projects, events, and functions of the city. The staff is top-notch and are always willing and smiling and have witnessed them many times dropping everything to help someone at the counter with something minor, but making them feel it was the most important thing they worked on for that day. This has been a positive and fulfilling experience in my career. The leadership and elected officials, past and present, have been a pleasure to work with, and I greatly appreciated the professional relationship that was extended. I know police work is at times misunderstood, and the trust the leaders have taken with my opinion or experience on issues did not go unnoticed. I really appreciate the opportunity to help with the policing program and protection of the Sagittuck area along with the rest of the county. I know many have my number. Please feel free to reach out if anyone needs anything. I consider many from the city as my friends." So, again, a big thanks to Captain Ennsfield. We appreciate your service to our community. All right, now on to manager's comments.
Well, thank you, Madam Mayor. And I had a lot of similar things on my list, so I just echo your comments. And thank you to all that came for the Maple Street Open House. Great turnout, a lot of great information was shared with us. And our engineer kind of compiled a lot of different thoughts and shared that with me recently, and more to come for you as a council, as we kind of look at the different options and price some things out at a high level, and come back to you to get some direction on what you want to actually start formally designing for. Also want to echo congratulations to Captain Ennsfield on his retirement. You know, since I've been in the interim and then city manager role, he's been a huge help and very responsive and very professional and been great to work with, and wish him well on his next adventure. But another partnership I wanted to just kind of recognize this evening goes to the Sheriff's Department and their dive team, as well as the Fire Department. So, we had a piece of PVC pipe, I think from a former swim buoy marker that broke off underwater. There was somebody that was out at the beach swimming, found it in an unfortunate way, and got some scratches to their chest and that sort of thing, and brought that to our attention. And Chief Janik and Sergeant Haas and the dive team were extremely helpful in jumping all over this. And our Department of Public Works team tried to find it, but you know, very difficult for our team to find it without some of the equipment that they have. And they were right on it and said, "Hey, we'll use our boats, we'll use our divers, we'll go out and see if we can locate this." And then they located and then used their equipment to actually remove the items. And so, truly want to thank them for their work on that and that partnership and collaboration that they provided to the city. Otherwise, I'm happy to cover anything that's in my manager's report during that section.
All right, all right, Ryan, thank you. Any agenda changes, additions, or deletions? Any guest speakers this evening? All right, we are on to public comment on agenda items only. If anyone in the audience wishes to speak, please come to the podium.
Hi, I'm Becky Carton-Carando, the Director of the Interurban. And I would love to take this opportunity to thank Kathy for her 22 years of service on the board. She has been very helpful. Her knowledge is unbelievable, and her support is unwavering. So, with that, I would like to hopefully encourage you to vote on that and reinstate her so we can keep her. Kathy, if you have a few things?
Yeah, I just want to introduce myself again. I'm Kathleen Johnson. I live at 334 Main Street in Sagittuck. And I have had the privilege of serving as the Sagittuck's representative and with Gregory and a few other people over the years. Twenty-two years is a long time, and I've been through three directors. And I've also done committee work. I was on the Committee to Hire Becky and been on other committees for hours and services and those kinds of things. So, I feel like I bring a lot to the Interurban. I know it's a family, and I know all the drivers, and we talk all the time on the streets. And they're very comfortable coming to me with anything, you know, just personal things or things that they want to talk about, things that they want to express, recommendations about Becky and other drivers. So, it's just been really a very good opportunity, and I'd like to continue serving my next four-year term with your approval. Thank you.
Excellent. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Anyone else in the audience wish to speak on public comment on agenda items only? All right, we'll move on to online then. Anyone with their hand raised? Okay, seeing none, we'll close public comment and move on to item number nine, the consent agenda. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
I'd like to make motion to approve a consent agenda with the exception of having to update for the minutes, Member Anderson's comments from last meeting.
Okay, do I have a second?
I'll second.
All right, any further discussion?
Yeah, Madam Mayor, good evening. I've got a question regarding the agenda change. So, I've always wondered what the item 11 request for payment was about. I haven't seen that used in the years I've been in council, so I was kind of curious. The one that really has more of my attention is the introduction of ordinances. And a couple of former council members reached out to me on this change. And basically, the question is, is that there had been a tradition, I don't know if tradition, but a protocol that the council, even when public hearings were not required for ordinance introductions, is that they would be put on the agenda for introduction to the community. That's the reason why introduction of ordinances. That way, then, there would be one meeting it would be on, and then the council would take action at the following meeting, giving people a chance to kind of see what's being introduced and to make comments. So, that was my understanding of this, and a couple of former council members had asked me about the need to pull that and why we have not been upholding that previous protocol process.
Ryan, you want to answer that?
Yeah, and I think it's really a preference of the council. There's not a, you know, a lot of communities do have either a charter, typically a charter requirement that requires, you know, two readings for ordinances before they're, you know, approved, or at least, you know, move on to be published and be effective. And so, at least since I've been here, well, one, there's not that requirement in your city charter. And since I've been here, I think all ordinances have been presented under new business, not under that separate item. And I think we've handled introduction of ordinances through the workshop process, where it's coming to a workshop, you're able to discuss it, and then coming to a regular meeting. So, there's still those opportunities to have, you know, kind of two looks and have it presented in different formats and at different meetings. But ultimately, it's a preference of the council. If you, you know, prefer to utilize that practice, that's ultimately up to you.
Any further discussion? Okay, all right, so this is a roll call vote?
Anderson?
Yes.
Baldwin?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes.
Gardner?
Yes.
Muncie?
Yes.
Stanton?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Motion carried?
All right. So, congratulations, Kathy. We appreciate you wanting to serve and continue to serve. Obviously, 22 years, all of your knowledge. It's just a blessing to have you back, and we're glad that you wanted to continue serving. So, thank you so much. Okay, moving on to staff reports, boards, commissions, and committees, city managers' report.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Mayor. So, we touched on the Maple Street Open House. I have, you know, other updates in the report. I trust all of you have read that, but happy to answer any questions if you have.
Anybody have any questions for the city manager? All right, we'll move on to the treasurer's report. Anything to highlight there? Or any questions? Go ahead, Russ.
A question, actually, a question. I'm not sure if this is for the manager or for the treasurer. I'm assuming the treasurer would probably take the lead on it. I would like to get a full accounting of the internal and external cost for the playground construction. That was something that had been discussed previously, and just looking for some follow-up on that.
Anything else? All right, we'll move on to the clerks' report. Jamie, anything you'd like to highlight? All right, any questions? All right, we'll move on to planning and zoning. Is Luke here or online? Anything to highlight there?
Luke's been hard at work. So, but if you have anything in particular for him, I'm happy to bring it to him and report back.
All right, sounds good. DPW, anything to report there?
I just kind of wanted to highlight Scott's reports. Well, I touched on the Old Beach. That's what I wanted to highlight, so, yep.
All right, I do want to thank Scott. A lot of people have been using the Shopper's Dock, and it has been covered with remnants of goose visitation. And it's been rough. And he and his crew have been trying to tackle that as often as possible. But man, it's something about this time of year that they're really active. And so, I know Scott has been working on it, and his team has been. So, I appreciate everyone's patience with them trying to keep it clean for everybody who's been using that. Okay, so moving on to the Sheriff's Department report, anything to highlight? Anybody have any questions? All right, thank you so much for being here.
Thanks, Ben.
All right, moving on to the engineers' report. John Moxie, anything to highlight?
Moving along with the various projects.
Okay, sounds good. We'll move on to the Fire District Administration. Dan?
Thanks very much. And before I start, I wanted to express my appreciation to those of you who called or otherwise got in touch with me after my ungraceful exit from the candidate forum. I had hyperextended my right knee exercising that morning, and I did not realize until sitting there for as long as we sat there, and you guys sat much longer than I did, but that when I stood up, the right knee was not going to happen. I mean, it was just not going to happen. So, I appreciate the expressions, and particularly appreciate Austin. Russ's, Austin's last name is?
Aaron.
Aaron, I want to add that.
He's behind you.
A godsend. I mean, literally, I'd have crawled out of there on my hands and knees without you. So, thank you very much. Just a few things that were not in the packet. I assume you all got what was in the packet. First off is this cross recovery filings, which I thought you might find interesting because the return there so far this year of almost $21,000 based on the Fire Department, Fire District's billing of people who made use of the services in sort of an extraordinary way, which includes, some of these are hard to decipher with acronyms and what have you, but includes the gas leak on Blue Star Highway, which was a major deal. And I forget which one it, oh, the last one. The, that's still, that's not the right one. The one, wherever the one is, that was the telephone pole knocked down in Douglas, which was another expensive one. And you can see there's, with whatever $21,000 in, there's another $21,000 we haven't gotten yet. You continue to attempt to do that to a point. I mean, we do not have, you know, there's a limit to how far we can push it when you're dealing with two or three or four levels of insurance companies, lawyers, and the rest of it trying to stiff you. So, we end up having some uncollectible debts. But we'll keep after them as best we can, as best they can. Following up on Ryan's comments, that top picture is the piece of pipe, PVC pipe that they used to anchor, anchor the swimming area buoys out at Oval Beach. And you can see it's kind of jagged there. And it's, that orange line was tied there to market. Beneath that is, to give you an idea, the Fire District boat and crew helped the city, helped DPW place those buoys in the springtime. And using the PVC pipe that you see on the front of the boat, they're stacked up on the front of the boat. And the last picture, if you would go up one, Jamie, that's the piece that came out. You can see the green stripe around, that's what we show, the LJ stripe around the pipe. Beneath that was in sand. And it really did require, I mean, it was a combined effort of the Sheriff's Office and DPW and the Fire District, as Ryan said. Because if you've, I don't know if you've ever tried to pull a stick out of the sand, and you grab onto it thinking it's this deep, but it's much deeper, and it does not even move without the equipment on that fireboat or something like it. They had to water jet down to loosen the sand all the way around this and get it out. So, it was quite a little project. The next one, that's the attenuator truck chassis. Remember, perhaps you do or you don't, the truck designed to safeguard first responders on the highway. It's, the photograph here is from the company that will then place the body, the attenuator piece, on the truck. You can see the picture. Ours is the only red one. They're all white. So, that's coming. I mean, obviously, has equipment to be added, but we're on our way. There's a sad reminder here of how important that truck is. This is from over near Detroit. Behind that semi on the left is what's left of a Michigan State Police Ford Explorer. The officer was on life support for a number of days and ultimately removed from life support and passed away. In this case, he was belted in that vehicle when it was hit. The car behind it, which I think is another Explorer, I can't tell. Apparently, they don't know whether somebody was texting or who knows what. But that bounced off the median and came across the lanes of traffic and hit him. Where the, on the very far right, the upper right, the fire truck that's sitting there is performing the function our attenuator truck will perform. And it's sort of the joy of the attenuator truck, not only in protecting people, but if it's hit, you're not suffering the loss of a $700,000 pump or whatever truck you're using. These are, the back part of that is expendable. And those are, the attenuator truck is much heavier than it appears, so it's not going to, it'll take a hit. So, and then finally, pardon me, a heads up, we will be the Fire District either in, board either altogether or with a reconstituted subcommittee. We'll be revisiting this document, white paper presentation on parade security, event security that was made to the council two years ago. We want to update you on where things are in the community here and around. How soon that'll happen? I mean, we had it on our agenda to begin that process, so the process has begun, and we'll do it as quick as we can.
All right, any questions for Dan? All right, thank you, Dan.
Thanks, Dan.
Thanks, Dan.
Interurban Board, Gregory?
Yes, our ridership numbers are up again. We carried 11,877 folks in August, which is 1,325 more riders than last year. We've seen busier afternoons and weekends there at the Interurban. Also, you know, we're about this close, about this close from beating last year. Right now, so far, we're at about, what is it? We are predicting, sorry about that, 68,859 riders. And we're predicting that many. Last year, at this time, we had 68,252. So, we're up. And just to let you know, back in COVID-2019, 2020, we only had 35,000 riders. The next year was 46,000, then 58,000. So, we're back at pre-COVID numbers to let you know, '17 and '18, we carried 65,000. And in '18 and '19, which were busy years in town, 70,000. So, that was kind of a record year for us there at the Interurban. Also, we're updating our website so that folks can purchase their tickets online. We're working on, that app should be, we talked about that app. That's something that's going to be in fruition next year. We're excited about that. But parents can now go online, purchase their kids' tickets online and at our website. So, that's all been good to go as well. Things are going great. Becky's doing such a great job. And we're looking forward to the, this is the end of our fiscal year. We got a big meeting coming up because we've got a budget. Also, the approval of a 5% increase for our wages across the board. And so, we're actually going to have sandwiches at our next meeting because it's going to be an extraordinarily long meeting. So, I suggest that, you know, the next time the council has a two to three hour meeting, perhaps we should get some, but yeah, and so happy to have Kathy on. I gave her a phone call when I, I hope I tried to nudge her a little bit when I found out she was thinking about stepping down. But she's a pleasure to work with, and the whole staff is there in her urban.
Great. Any questions for Gregory? Okay, moving on to Cal Lake Sewer and Water Authority. Barry is in the house.
Good evening, council. Let's see. We had a meeting on September 16th. We had a full quorum, and our wastewater treatment plant, daily monitoring, and our monthly water report were submitted without issue. Residential sampling of lead copper rule has now been completed. So, a number of people in the community submitted samples of their water, and those are gone to the lab for testing. We did our whole effluent toxicity, aquatic toxicity report sampling. We put animals in the water that's going back into the river, and everybody survived. So, quality municipal wastewater effluent. Douglas, Douglas, Douglas. We're doing our sampling of the local water services to, again, find the lead service lines. We're potholing, we're digging down to see what the connections are. Generally, if there's galvanized coming from the city, there's probably a lead line at the city end. Douglas is 95% complete. The township, 50% of the city of Sagittuck, 50% complete on that. And that's going to be wrapping up pretty quick. Really in the city here that, you know, the water flows, the toilet flushes. Any questions?
Does anybody, anybody have any questions while Barry is here? Go ahead, Russ.
Yeah, quick question, thanks. Good evening, Barry. I had meant to mention during the city manager's report, he had, or actually, it was the engineering report, Fleece and Vanderbrink has, I think, sent an email out to everybody in the city to have them take a photo of their water line coming into their home. And I just wondered, do we know how far along we are on that? I got from that is that we're ready to start going out. And so, that should definitely be communicated to people. So, when they see people out digging their yard, they know why they're there. Two is, do we know how far along we are in terms of compliance with that? Has John Moxie indicated anything?
Yeah, so, we sent out the notice to everybody with the hopes to get as many as possible. So, there's a certain percentage that we have to meet to meet the state requirement. But as far as like voluntary sending out, asking folks for help, we've had about 120 to 130, I think was the last update that I received. So, I just got an updated list earlier today, actually.
Okay, so pretty small, pretty small compliance at this point with, so many properties are in the city?
Yeah, I mean, there's what, about 1,100 water service accounts between 1,100. So, you know, voluntary compliance and requesting folks to, you know, take the time to take a picture. And some of them have to get in some really tight spots with crawl spaces.
I have a crawl space. I have a terrible crawl space.
I don't think that's terrible, yeah. So, and then, you know, so the more pieces of the puzzle that we have, if, you know, if we take that 110, 120, and spread them across the city in areas that we suspect there's lead service lines, I mean, that's going to give us some really good clues if we're starting to see some patterns of where they're at. So, the addresses that are on our randomized lists, that we don't have that voluntary picture from, door hangers will be left by the contractor. They're going to be, you know, knocking on your door to try to get inside and take that picture or access that entry point themselves.
So, would it, does it save us time or money for people to be making an effort to actually get that photo into John Moxie or get it into Fleece and Vanderbrink?
Yeah, that's time the contractor doesn't have to, you know, knock on the door, come back if you don't answer, try to get ahold of that person if they're, you know, some of these are rental units and things like that. There's not actually owners on site. And so, you know, I'm a little concerned that some of those are going to take multiple follow-ups. So, yes, every time somebody is giving us that information, that does save time and money.
Okay, I'll have to go across the street to my aunt and uncle who don't get emails and see if they'll be willing to let me take a picture of their water.
Sure they will.
Yeah, help your neighbors out.
Yeah, that's the reason I mentioned that.
Yeah.
All right, anything else? Go ahead, Gregory.
That's the city function, and the city owns the pipes and the ground. And, you know, we are there to assist where we can, but it's really something that you guys contracted for. And I stopped to do it, but I got to get down on a crawl space to do it on one of my one house. But you can tell a lot from those pictures to see what the service coming into a house, how old that is, gives you a pretty good indication what's at the other end.
Yep.
Right.
And my house on Main Street, about eight, nine years ago, we had our pipes freeze. So, we went down and fixed the freeze. But I said, "I want to find what's on, you know, what I'm tapped into." So, we paid a significant amount of money, did a street cut, and we went to the street on Main Street, and I did have a lead pipe. And I've saved that as a souvenir, if you ever want to see one. So, there's going to be a lot of that up on the hill.
Yeah, I have a piece in my office, too, if anybody wants to look. And that is a, it reminds me, too, we did send out a mailed notice to every water customer as well. It was a big mailing that went out.
That's what I responded to.
Yep, yep.
Gregory, go ahead.
Yeah, I was just real curious. What is the state percentage? What is the requirement by the state?
Of lead service lines?
Yeah, of, no, how many pictures that we need, the data that we need to collect? You said there was a certain percentage?
Yeah, I don't, I don't have the exact percentage. Yeah, so, but I will say that at 2040, we have to have 100% of the lead service line material.
That's why I was wondering. It was like, how close do they want us to be? I was just curious.
The percentage of verifications, I know it's much less than that. I don't know the exact, but I can follow up on that.
Oh, I'm curious.
The inventory is due into my agency on the 16th of October.
That's correct.
Anything else? All right, Barry, thank you.
Thank you.
On to the Harbor Authority, Logan, any updates?
Nothing to report. I was unable to attend the last meeting. I had a grad school class, so I need to catch up on that.
Okay, thanks, Logan. Okay, thanks, Logan. Moving on to Zoning Board of Appeals. Nothing to report.
Yeah, they, yeah, they did have a, a meeting this month. It was a request or a substitution of, of one non-conforming use for another from a multiple family dwelling to a motel. It's kind of a, an extra function of, of the ZVA to hear kind of a substitution request like that, that's specific to our, our zoning ordinance. And they did grant that request.
Okay.
That's related to 560 Campbell. I think all of you know that, but make sure I can get the address out there, so.
So they granted that?
That's correct. Yep.
It's great, wonderful. Okay, moving on to the Historic District Commission, Russ.
Our next meeting is scheduled for Thursday, October 3rd at 6:00 PM.
October 3rd, okay. Thank you so much. Moving on to the Planning Commission.
Yeah, we met last Thursday. Actually, it was an interesting meeting. We had a, a public hearing for approving an ADU. And it was just shy of the size it needed to be. So, but when it was originally built, correct me if I'm wrong, Trent, it met the current zoning then. So we are going to revisit at the next meeting to see either changing the ordinance, propose an ordinance change to say that if the ADU was compliant at the, you know, originally, that it could, it could continue. Or move slightly lower, consider lowering the square footage size for an ADU. So our, I can't remember, it's seven, it's 376, 375? And so 350, the little bit of research we've done, 350 seems big enough. Anyway, it is an ongoing deliberation, so.
Okay.
If obviously the ordinance changes, it would come before council.
Okay.
Or is, is proposed, council would have to approve.
All right, anybody have any questions for Holly?
Did I get that right?
Yeah, no, absolutely. Could I, and I think you guys did move forward with scheduling a public hearing on the waterfront preservation.
Thank you. That, yes, yes. So, yeah, the other topic that was before us was to look at the waterfront zoning that we passed last year and whether we, how it's written now. It's, it's, somebody could have a first floor condo. And to, so the, there are a couple of ways we could address that. One is to continue to allow that within a PUD so that it's part of a negotiation with the city or to just exclude that as a permitted use.
Okay. All right, any questions on that? All right, we'll move on then to the Parks and Public Works Committee.
Meet tomorrow morning, bright and early, 10 o'clock.
10 AM.
Not really that early, but.
It's really not that early. It's bright and shiny. Okay, any questions to Helen? All right, we'll move on to the Tri-Community Non-Motorized Trail Study Committee.
As is noted on page 29 of our packet in the manager's report, we did meet last week. And it's important for everybody to remember that the initial project now, the budget is coming in 25% higher than budgeted. This is due to more boardwalk and retaining wall work that they believe is going to be needed for the project. To address those costs, C2AE is, is going to be asking the M.D. Grant Coordinators about additional funding. So in addition to that, they'll be looking at contingency plans if they need to make any adjustments to the project. But I don't want anybody to be surprised about the increase in, in cost estimates for this project.
Okay, any questions? All right, we'll move on to item 11, request for payment, none. That moves us on to approval of accounts payable on page 47.
Mayor?
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion for accounts payable in the amount of, to approve the accounts payable in the amount of $2,919,300, $2,919,310 and 18 cents.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All right, any discussion?
I just want to say 2.8 million of that is a pass through.
Yeah, yeah, that's, I wanted to say that too, that the, uh, three of them were major pass-throughs. One was property taxes collected in the amount of over a million, 1.2. The other were, uh, school, public schools collected in 871,000. And of course, the Ottawa area intermediate school district was another pass-through, which was almost 700,000. So that's really where the meat was.
Don't forget the 13,000 and change for the sales tax from the beach.
Right.
Tails in comparison to the other three, but that's in there as well.
All right, and this is a roll call vote.
Anderson?
Yes.
Baldwin?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes.
Gardner?
Yes.
Muncy?
Yes.
Stanton?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Motion carries.
We have no introduction of ordinances, no unfinished business, which leads us to item 15A. New business, Fifth Amendment to the Waste Services Agreement. It's on page 48 of your packet, Ryan.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Mayor. That's your workshop. We discussed kind of the updated proposal from Republic Services to extend their services, at least for another four years. So all that information is in your, your workshop packet. The current agreement expires at the end, well, actually October 1st. So we're not quite done with the, the back and forth on, on the, the extension. There's some, some language in the proposed agreement that we would like to see changed. And so staff has sent those requested changes to Republic and, and they have it with their legal and I haven't gotten that back yet from them. So I'm asking you to essentially extend the existing agreements, at least another a few months. Anticipating that we'll have those changes and we'll have that updated or that new agreement in place well before then. But want to give us enough wiggle room if there's continued back and forth. So if we have a new agreement before then, then, you know, we can have that agreement, you know, replace this extension. But want to make sure that we're at least covered until that new agreement is in place.
All right, do I have a motion?
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
Motion to approve the Fifth Amendment to Waste Services Agreement.
Second.
All right, any discussion?
Yeah, Madam Mayor, just, so Republic's on board with the extension too, I'm assuming.
I've sent the, these documents to them. I haven't heard back from Jack Brown on this, but I anticipate we're going back and forth in good faith and they've been providing services for a while. They weren't willing to, uh, work with us for another couple, you know, short period of time to, to finish it up. I would, I would be shocked, but.
So we don't need to have a Plan B? The expectation is Republic's going to?
That's my expectation, yeah.
All right, any other discussion?
And just a reminder that there were a few folks that wanted to keep their small cans because they didn't like the larger ones. Republic will continue servicing those small cans, of course, at the same price of the regular cans. But any new ones, they will be phasing those out. So if you have one of those small cans and you like it, hold on to it. But, but they will still be serving, servicing those. I know we got an inquiry or two about those.
We did. All right, all right, this is a roll call vote.
Anderson?
Yes.
Baldwin?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes.
Gardner?
Yes.
Muncy?
Yes.
Stanton?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right, moving on then to public comment on anything you'd like to talk about tonight. Feel free to come up to the podium. If anybody wishes to speak, feel free to come on up. Just a reminder to state your first and last name and where you live.
My name is Emily Jip and I live at 374363 Third Street, which is technically Lake Town Township. But it's always nice to see what our neighbors are doing. I was last year April 22nd because I have thrown my hat in the ring for the newly created Circuit Court Judge position, just as a lightning refresher. A Circuit Court Judge, specifically this one, will mostly be handling criminal law matters. So if you're facing more than a year incarceration and then a small family locket, family law docket, that would be divorces without child custody disputes. A Circuit Court Judge, however, would also, if the dockets got shifted, have jurisdiction over matters. If you're fighting over amounts more than $25,000, so you sue your neighbor because they run a car into your house or something, something crazy like that. Also, a Circuit Court Judge can hear if someone was to sue a municipality. Maybe they didn't like an ordinance, et cetera. That would first go to Circuit Court. But I am anticipating this position based on what the Circuit Court Administrator has indicated and the Chief Circuit Court Judge will be mostly criminal law. I have been in practice for 15 years. I'm currently a prosecuting attorney, not to bore you with all this again. But I've also been a defense attorney and I was also in private practice handling divorces and child custody disputes and a random smattering of civil matters. One of my big pushes is for Drug Treatment Court. We just recently had an update on that. That is typically grant funded out of Lansing. All the surrounding counties offer this service because it is statistically proven to reduce the number of repeat offenses for these low level drug users. Our Circuit, Circuit Court Judge, Matt Ankoviak, kind of spearheaded trying to apply for this grant. They requested $600,000 to operate this programming. That's an astronomical number and I was not surprised to hear that we, as a county, did not receive that funding. If you're to think that every county that has a Drug Treatment Court was to ask for over a half a million dollars, we would, we would have quite the budget crisis. We were approved for $25,000. That would be not adequate to fund this programming. So I would really like the opportunity to get elected, to get in there, to talk with people that write grants regularly, to talk with our neighbors because our neighbors are funded, grant funded out of Lansing. So there's no reason we can't reframe the ask and, and get the money necessary to offer this vital programming. So I would really appreciate your support in November. Hopefully you are seeing my annoying signs pop back up now that we're kind of in the final crunch. If you have any questions, I have some flyers and I'm happy to pass those out. I just don't want to keep littering. And other than that, I'll stick around. So thank you very much.
Thank you so much. Anyone else in the audience wish to speak tonight? All right, anyone online with their hand raised? Okay, so that wraps up public comment. We do have some correspondence there. I hope you had a chance to read the letters from the two young people who decided to write in. And they made note of the appreciation of the new playground of Oval Beach. And one mentioned their favorite restaurant, Phil's. I love. And then also you see there the boards and committee openings for the Tri-Community Wildlife Committee. We are still looking for a resident to be a part of that one. And the Zoning Board of Appeals has an opening as well. This leads to council comments. Let's start with Logan tonight. Hi.
This can be a little bit of a wacky one.
Okay.
I have some exciting and personal news to share with you guys. My wife and I are moving to Holland.
Oh, I thought you were going to say.
I was going to say we're having a baby.
Oh, man.
Oh. Oh, Logan.
Maybe someday. But what that means for this group is that I am no longer going to be able to serve the city, unfortunately. So yeah, there's not, there's not a lot more to talk about there. I don't have an exact timeline on that. We're trying to get some work done on this house that we bought. But I'm hoping soon. So as far as next steps, I, I understand, I'm trying to figure that out with you guys. I don't, I know I don't get to pick, I'm going to be leaving before the end of my term next year, is what I'm trying to communicate. I don't get to pick who replaces me at all. I think that's you guys. That's what you guys do. I would like to suggest that you consider appointing Austin Marinow to serve in my seat. I've known Austin for an extremely long time. We went to elementary school here together. And since then, he's been up to some incredible things and building a very impressive resume that I'm confident would serve the city well. And yeah, just give a quick shout out, Michigan Law graduate, go Blue. Need to do a little, go Blue shout out there, Army veteran. And yeah, longtime community member. And I know you guys are familiar with him, so I know he's a good guy. But I hope for the community's sake that you take my recommendation to heart. I'd also like to say I'm optimistic for the future of Sagatuck. And I'm not going anywhere far away, Talon. It's like six miles north where, where we bought. I'm still going to be around here. You're still going to see me. I'm still going to be serving the city. Film Festival will continue. Still going to be around, but I just will not be sitting in this chair for that much longer. So I just wanted to give you, in the spirit of transparency, I wanted to give you a heads up on that. And I'm looking forward to helping execute a successful transition away from me coming down here and hanging out, so.
Well, congratulations on your new house.
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah.
We're excited. We're excited about it, but yeah.
All right.
That's good, that's it.
Logan, thank you. And we'll talk more, I'm sure. All right, Gregory.
We are going to be decorating for fall again this week. I've got volunteers ready for Thursday night. We'll be meeting at Pudding Stone. Gene and I will be teaching everybody how to make bows. So Emily, if you want to come join us or anybody else. AJ, I know you volunteered, if possible, on Saturday. But we'll be making bows there Thursday evening at 6:00 PM. And I'll have some more information later on Facebook for that. Make sure everybody knows. Lined up with Scott and the DPW Friday afternoon, they'll be distributing all the hay bales, the corn stalks, and folks like April Gundy and more will be helping set those up on Friday as well. So y'all are more than welcome to join. I think I still have to figure out what time on Friday, probably around noonish. But I'll let everybody know if you want to meet up and strap those corn stalks to everything. We have a lot of fun with it and I'd like to thank Wicks Park Bar and Grill. Chad had called me and offered to make pizza for all the bow makers on Thursday. So free pizza, if you guys want to come that night. I'd also like to thank a couple of folks, Gene from Back to the Fuchsia, who's providing the ribbon. And folks who, folks from the quaint cottages who donated money for the hay bales and corn stalks and pumpkins. So again, as we do this every year, it's a very collaborative event and it's a lot of fun. So I ask everybody to help make the towns look really cool. Also, I want to mention the town, it's, it's beginning to look a lot like Christmas, if you've noticed. And you'll, you'll see our Christmas lights are going up and I'm super excited about that as well. So the holidays are coming. This is my favorite time of year.
Nice, nice. Thanks, Gregory. Scott?
Just like to thank Councilman White for, for his service to, to the city and, and his service on this board. And I, and I'm certainly hopeful there'll be another opportunity for us to show our appreciation to, to your time with us on the council, Logan. So thank you for that. I'd also like to thank the Holland League of Women Voters for putting on the candidate forum on Tuesday at the high school. It was, it was a very good, good event.
Okay, Helen?
Also want to thank Councilmember White for her service on the board and let be proud of, and you've served us well. I want to talk about the, hanging out with 66 eighth graders on a Friday morning was a unique experience. We had a great time showing the airport property, getting through. I mean, they were hauling, you know what? I was getting concerned about, are we going to violate in child labor laws? They were running whole bale. I mean, all this brush through and everybody left. I counted, I, I just spent my whole time counting to 13. That was my team. So 13, 13, 13, make sure I didn't lose anybody down a ravine because there was a little dicey there. But we had a great time, got to show off the airport property, talk to them about conservation, why it's important, what, what the airport property has and that. And I thought that they were really receptive and I, and I loved our new group of, I think I called them civil servants and Ryan said, one of the kid goes, "Civil servants, this is just grunt labor." They're still eighth graders, but we had a really good time. So yeah, that was probably the best day I had this week. Thank you for that.
That's great. Russ?
Yeah, thank you. I want to thank Kathy Johnson, who's left obviously, but want to thank her for her service and continued efforts to serve to the board. Thank you, Logan. More to talk about. Appreciate you. Save the date, July 4th, 2026. The United States will be celebrating its 250th birthday. It's called a semi-quintcentennial. Say that three times quickly. There's a small group that's being formed that's, is already formed to begin planning local recognition of the anniversary details to follow, so. 250 years.
Awesome. All right, Holly?
We are.
Yeah.
I love the kids' letters that just made the, made the packet. John Moxie did a great job at the Maple Street Open House. He is such a gifted facilitator. It was really great to see the community engagement. And Logan, you're my cohort buddy. I'm, I'm, I'm excited for you, but we'll miss serving with you. So that's it for me.
All right, at this time, a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
All those in favor say yes.
Yes.